Okay, let's call the council meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Liberties regular city council meeting. I six. Okay. It's July 6, 2021, 7:30 PM. And we are at the West Liberty Public Library as City Hall is under renovation. All councilors are present except for Councilmember Veronic. And in attendance is also Lee Gert, who is our city clerk treasurer and slash interim city manager. We're in many hats. Do we have a motion from a counselor to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion is approved and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody oppose? Passes four zero. We are gonna go on to appointments. It's a great pleasure to appoint the next two individuals. We will start out with Dave Ogland, who is gonna be our next city manager. And he will be starting in August. And we're gonna go ahead and administer the oath of office. You could just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, David Ogland.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Sowmely swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To my best ability.
My best ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of city manager.
Discharge all the duties of the office of city manager.
Of the city of West Liberty, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law.
As of the city of West Liberty, Iowa, as now and hereafter.
By law.
By law.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to board. I could go ahead and have you go ahead and sign it. I've tried in the past to break it up every six words and then it just gets choppy. And you know, you just never know how to do that. And would you like to get a?
Yeah, I'll sign it and then you guys.
And it's unfortunate that your wife wasn't able to come, but we'll go back. We just maybe. Yeah. You just wanna.
Yeah.
Did you already get one?
Well, I just didn't want to get like my bum in the.
An alley cat.
Yeah. No more. Good job.
Thank you. Welcome board.
Thank you.
And it's also a great pleasure to go ahead and introduce the next police chief. And that is Eric Worley. Eric, go ahead and have you do the same thing. And after the swearing in, if you would like to maybe have your five year old come up and maybe look like he's putting a badge on you for a photo. We could get that.
Perfect.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Eric Worley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
As police chief of the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As police chief of the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Eric. And what congratulations again to both. Chief Worley will also be starting in August.
We'll make sure we get a post-it on our social media page.
Okay. We're on to public hearings. And tonight is open a public hearing in the application to change the agricultural zone to mix R1, R2, and R3 for a mixed residential development. I have the northeast corner of East Rainbow Drive in Garfield Avenue.
Motion to open public hearing.
Sir.
This motion in a second, you can pick which one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys and Councilmember Otis. The public hearing is open. Is there any public comments from anywhere? Anybody in the public about the changing of the residential or the agricultural to residential? Okay, nobody here in the audience at City Hall. Is there any public comments out in Zoom for the, for this issue? I always have a hard time seeing if anybody.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any comments, anyone raising their hands to make a comment or chat.
Okay.
Any, and I have not received any public comments.
Okay. I will then go ahead and ask for a motion to close it.
Motion to close public hearing.
Sir, a second. Sorry. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys? Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
It is closed. I recall vote of four zero. Next item is the ordinance 2021 0420-01. And this is the first reading of the ordinance approving the application to change the said agricultural zone to the mix R1, 2, and 3 for the residential development at said address.
Motion to open public hearing.
This is the ordinance.
Oh, this is.
You want?
Motion for first reading of the ordinance. I was.
You left further down.
I was just impatient moving along.
Sir, a second.
Sir.
Here's motion as second, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember Otis. First reading passes four zero. Okay, we are on to the second public hearing. And this is open and public hearing establishing regulations for operating golf carts, ATVs, and UTVs in the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
Yeah.
Sir, a second. There's motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Public hearing is open, four zero votes. Is there any public comments? You guys wanna, I know that you've been in front of the council before and expressed all, all your views. Anything else to add?
Well, I'm gonna say something with her. You know, like my UTV's licensed insurance net. And we can't come into town like to get fuel or nothing, but yet you see the city has a UTV. They don't have no slow moving vehicles, flags or nothing on theirs. A school has one. And they ride, there is up and down the street. And I just think this isn't fair for us, you know? Not that I'm gonna come into town every night and ride every street, but just to get fuel or go to Fred's or something. And you know, and you see some running the streets, which I don't know who they are, don't care. But I just don't, don't think it's fair for some of us that's abided the law, that we're legal and we can't do it. You know what I'm saying?
Correct.
And I have a, on my cart, I have the six foot flag, the SMB sign, the headlights, taillight, proof of insurance, street legal tires. And I periodically go to Fred's and back and that's not far to go, but I'm afraid to travel much further. And I see other vehicles, four wheelers and other vehicles all over town. And then I also noticed the one about the, the UTV, the city had, has no flag or SMB sign on it. I'm just going with what the stipulation say on the paper I printed out. That what I needed to have on my golf cart, which I've got it all on there, but I don't see anybody else practicing it.
Comments taken. I, I think probably that the city will probably have to upgrade and put those on if we're, we're expecting everybody else to do the same. There is a thing called home rule, which allows governments to do certain things that other things. But I think if we're gonna have rules in place, that we should probably go ahead and make those adjustments and provisions also. So, thank you for your comments. I like that. Anything else for public comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I do not see anyone from the Zoom using hand. And furthermore, I did print off correspondence that I received from Teresa Mucho in favor of the golf cart ordinance. And she, just briefly, she communicated that they have a golf cart and they purchased the lighting kit to make it street worthy or street ready too with the taillights, headlights, turn signals. And that, that was pretty much. She had also taken some time to research some other communities. And, and you can see in her email there that she was pretty thorough about information that she had found, so.
Yeah, and then she had included like no more than three people may ride a bench seat. A person may ride on the lap of another. I mean, that's pretty common. I mean, is that something that?
Um, that's my understanding. It's within the within our ordinance, because it's stating the Iowa code. And then the Iowa code, it does not allow. I don't think we have a bench seat in here. But in her Iowa code, you have to follow the same traffic rules. So you can't sit on somebody's lap if you're driving a car. So you can't do that. You have to be a licensed driver. And I think that would go the same for ATVs and UTV, UTVs is the way I understood from the ordinance that you're gonna follow the same traffic laws that you follow a car. And then per our previous readings, I did, we did go back and we added the equipment. The only question in the ordinance was, did you want to have a flag and ace? Do you want to have both or do you just want one or the other? That was the only question that in the ordinance that was unclear.
What was discussed?
A slow moving sign or end of flag or one or the other. We just would have to make sure that before we finally having this finalizes that you have that.
What was discussed in your committee?
Just have it in there. I mean, one way or the other, we just need to say exactly what you want. I mean, to me, I don't think the ATVs need a slow moving sign. Just for fact that they're not slow moving. I mean, I understand that to keep under the 25, but they're not slow moving vehicles. So I would think just a flag for those. Then does a golf cart need a flag and a slow moving sign?
Or?
Or just a slow moving sign?
Or do they, do they have reflectors? I mean, I don't know what it involves.
Well, golf carts will have to have.
We did a street legal white kit. They would have to have.
We went off of what Doug has pretty much. It's a kit that you can buy for your cart, but turn signals, lights.
Or was it headlights, taillights, turn signals, four way lights?
We have another comment.
So for the county, we don't need a, like our UTV, like we can run 50 mile an hour, you know? We don't need a flag for the county, you know what I'm saying? And I don't even know if we need a slow moving vehicle, but I've got one on mine, but I don't have a flag. But for the flag, we're not required for the county because we can run just as fast as, faster than a tractor and a car. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, I mean.
And also the flag, the other thing most says six feet in height. Does that mean six feet from the ground? I'm assuming not six foot off of here. Those are some of the clarification, I guess.
So my question is, we have a first reading that's in front of us tonight. If you have more clarifications.
Well, this is for discussion for us, I guess. I, I don't know what anybody else has. Yeah, I mean, we can go ahead and do the reading tonight. You know, knowing that we're gonna make these clarifications.
I might have a six foot flag on, but it's.
Six feet from the ground.
The flag, the flag is above my head and I'm standing on the ground. And that's low, that's over six feet.
So you must have a six feet flag and then it gets.
It's above the roof of my car.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
It's closed four zero. We are on to ordinance 2021 0420-02. And this would be the ordinance in the first reading. I, before I ask a motion, can I get clarification? If we do a first reading, can we make modifications to the second? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Well, the reason why I was asking, I didn't want to have to then go back and start this process another two weeks and then put, by that time, snow's gonna be on the ground.
You'll leave that quick.
So with your first, so with this motion on the first reading, you can make the recommendation for the ordinance to be. If you're going to approve it, you can make the motion to change how you want the flag or the slow moving sign now, so it's ready for the second reading that extracted. If you that would be, you know, just my input is.
I think we need to look at the state, look at regulations, what do they mean six feet from the ground or six feet from the bumper of the vehicle? I think we need to get clarification on that.
Um.
To be legal with the state.
So, I mean, that's just exactly how it reads it, the state code.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's the, actually, it's five feet for this state. But they have slow moving signs, they don't require a flag. I believe the flag is pertaining more to a golf cart. Or visibility in the city.
I would assume slow moving vehicle would be the same because they don't go as fast, right?
Well, the other two are gonna go just as fast as a car. It's gonna be golf carts.
Slow. So I think including that also kind of covers all of our bases, right?
Someone wanna make a motion to accept the first reading with further modifications to come?
Yes, can I stay with this?
Yes.
Uh, so the slow moving sign or UTV, ATV would be exempt. But they would need a orange safety flag, at least six feet in height from the ground.
And what, just, just so I have clarification, you said exempt the ATV, but what about the UTVs?
The UTV, ATV.
Okay, both of those are combined. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys? Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
The first reading has passed. Thank you, gentlemen. We are on to approval of the consent agenda. This involves two items tonight in front of the council is the regular council meeting minutes of June 15, 2021. And the, the city clerk slash treasurer's May 2021 report. There's motion, is there a second? There's a motion, second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody oppose? Passes four zero. The next item is the vendor vouchers claims list. We have one list in front of us tonight, an amount of $801,175.37. There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I was just curious, line number, line number 41. If you could just expand upon that, exactly what that meant. So for the employee handbook review that was sent to the organization, that would be Mary Funk is who Elizabeth Hansen had referred to.
Okay.
At a last meeting and the organization is reviewing to make sure and then go through some compliance making recommendations.
Okay.
For updates.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Right.
Right.
Anybody oppose? Passes four zero. We're on to public comments and correspondence is only for, only two gentlemen were gone. So it looks like we have no further public comments for anybody in person. How about online, is there any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, not seeing anyone raise hands or using the chat would be just want to give back a little more minutes, just in case if they want.
We'll recheck and we'll go, um, was there anything else? Either mailing or email correspondence, other than the, the email reference, the golf carts?
No, Mr. Mayor.
If you want to check, make sure that there's been no.
Nothing, yeah.
Hey, Councilmember Smith, is there anything from the public?
No.
Councilmember Rock? Councilmember Zacharys?
The owner of the property where the, where the restaurant is, Alberto Solis, is asking me if he is willing to help him demolish a shed that is the back of the property. Has no use for him, but it's an eyesore. And he's asking for skid loader or something like that to tear it down. He will dispose of whatever is there.
Even if it's not like talk to me to, he has to pay for it. Can that be considered probably capital improvement?
Right.
If you're doing overall robbery.
Lee, can you check with our thing and just get back if there's anything that needs to be approved by council? Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember McFerrin?
Um, nothing, actually.
We will head on to new business. Lots of new business. We have in front of us a resolution to approve change order three, and that's reference of the SG Construction, the West Liberty Police and City Hall construction. And this is in the amount of $14,706.52.
Motion to approve change order three, number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, discussions is, do we have Leo tonight?
Um, so Leo and Tara were, Tara were unable to be present tonight at the meeting.
Okay.
Um, all of the change order information were in your packet.
Yeah.
Um, if you just had seen, again, as we discussed, there's been, you know, a couple of issues with the walls. And there had to be some modifications, the electrical changes. And the other thing was is that through this, they discovered that there was a window that had not been in the original design. And so I opted, we, we removed a couple of other things and negotiated and to have the window put in. And that would be in the area where the, the clerking station would be for just to allow some more lighting to the area. So, again, as we've talked about, ran into a couple of. But nothing too terribly bad yet, but it happens when something.
Yeah, so the change order, as our packet explains, covers some of the additional labor and also some, some other construction costs. They did provide a lot of photos of the city hall being under construction and.
Yeah, I was wondering if, I noticed there was some decomposition on this inside the masonry. I didn't know if that was, it was gonna go back and haunt us. So.
Those are things that come up when you start rehabbing and doing construction on older buildings.
And that was, again, with the, is just making sure that those are done correctly and
Okay.
up to code.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was extensive beyond this, okay.
Okay, you had a planner box.
We added a planner box to the front of the building because we've had numerous individuals run into the building. And so the planner box has created a buffer for, for that. And again, no one deliberately has ran into the building.
Right.
Just an accident, but it's happened by the.
And you're not the only building on Capitol.
Yeah, that's, yeah. The part, the part is not always.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and recall. Councilmember Rock? Yes. Councilmember Zacharys? Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passes four zero. Make sure to give dynamic text.
Don't spoiler, I hate it.
Next resolution in front of us is Resolution dash 28. And this is a resolution to approve some funding. It says match grant, but I believe that is not correct. And this is for IEDA and the shield construction. Is that correct?
Correct. So what, what we're applying for, what the resolution states is that the city supports the application for up to a $500,000 zero percent interest loan to the IDPA for the one that was the West Liberty Tire Shop building. The reason that we have to have the resolution is it shows that the idea, that the city is a hundred percent backing the idea behind the project. It's a private development, but the city acts as the intermediary, intermediary between Des Moines and the final project. So what we do is we reply for up to $500,000. Doesn't mean we'll get that amount, but it allows it to apply for the maximum amount to be used only for turning the West Liberty Tire Shop into a mixed use residential and commercial site. So it's gonna transform what is a nuisance project right now. I was in contact with the state a few months ago, trying to get that label as an abandoned slash nuisance property because it opens it up to some, some capital that we wouldn't otherwise have. And again, the city, this. capital that we wouldn't otherwise have. And again, the city, this, the resolution is simply supporting that we go through with the application. And then a development agreement and everything else will come after that. So it's not allowing any funds or anything like that. It's just allowing the application process and saying the city supports us moving forward with it. Again, I spoke with the IEA. They deemed it as a nuisance property. It was kind of borderline. Um, but they're like, you know, given the progress we want to make and what we've been doing so far, they bumped it up to where we need to be. So it really is a great access. Again, it's a five-year loan. The construction company will do the project and repay it back and whatever the city sets up and the city just sends the payment or sends the money to the construction company, construction payments and it goes. So you're just a middle man in that. So, but it is something that's going to take a project that is literally will transform the entrance of the city. It's going to be pretty sharp. I have the plans in my office.
I do. Question, am I allowed to ask?
Sure.
True. Um, it, there isn't, it's not considered like, uh, a brown field or anything.
No, it's, the city had done.
So tighter storage or the tanks underground, were they removed or?
Um, I don't know if they're removed. Were they, um, so I know the city had done the initial testing within the area and there's no issue to have it.
Okay.
Whether it's a brown field or.
When you did that, okay, okay. I just.
So everything is clear from that, right?
Okay.
Um, it's just because it's so vital and it's, I mean, what you do.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you have limited options and it's going to be, uh, a pretty capital heavy investment to turn it into what will be a vital aspect, especially in that Tiff zone where many times it's to come around the city to cross from the new gas station and everything else, plus it's close to schools. It's really going to improve the overall look, plus obviously the tax incentives are going to come in that. So that's what we're asking for is the, the city to approve the resolution allowing us to, to move forward with the application. It's just going to, this is the final piece for you to submit it. Again, we'll submit it on behalf of the city and then me and I have been working on this, uh, just kind of, it's a slow process.
Okay. We want to approve, is there some issue? So.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
So we're not matching no money?
No, there's no matching. The city is literally just, um, Devlin, right? The city has checked, the city will give it to them.
Right.
And places. So there's no.
That was my type.
Yeah.
Okay. I just.
I got.
Correct.
If you have a copy of the resolution you want.
No.
I know, I know, I've got one.
Anything further? Hearing none, we'll go with roll call. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember McPhair?
Yes.
Passes four zero. Thank you, Joe. Boy, once we get up, get you up there, Joe, you just don't get down to you. So the, the next, uh, on the list is discussion and appropriate follow-up for the economic development application submitted by James Keel for matching grant in the amount of thirteen thousand.
Yep. So this is for James, Jim Keel, his building. As you know, we just received the hundred thousand dollar catalyst grant for building our next quarter of that. It's official in both. We've got the hundred thousand dollars. This will, uh, help Keel put a new roof on, protect his investment and obviously it's, you know, the wheelie building on water travels downhill, um, and trying to take off in front of our building. So it's a good step for that. It's a capital improvement, meets all the benchmarks that we have set. And then it approves a building downtown to allow for further improvements going down the road. I support, uh, the application. Again, it, it, it's all the marks.
And, and it also, is it for also some piping or?
Yeah, you got a, a few things that are in there, but primarily.
Okay, great. Uh, I think the program that we've started has, has, uh, been used pretty, uh, you know, appropriately and it has.
It's been very well received.
Yes, it's been used very well.
I should have, uh, months time, we should have several more. I think it, it, the slowest process that we're having right now is getting contractors to bid the projects. And like anyone in, it's like, they're short everywhere, but as we get the bids come in, or we have the application ready to submit, so I've been in contact with probably six other people trying to get those things.
Does there need to be any?
There'll, there'll have to be a more, if appropriate follow-up. So is, does anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and, uh, so submit the, approve the middle of the application.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, should I do a roll call for this too?
Uh, no, this can be.
Oh, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Right.
Anybody opposed? Passes four zero. Joe, we are on to the economic development application. Randy Klein doing business as Paul Revers.
Correct. Yeah. So he's put in a, uh, the grant application, uh, primarily redoing the front of his building, top point and painting the windows. Top portion, he's really going to improve that part of the building. So from a downtown aspect, this is, I mean, it's, there's, I he's done it from the get-go. He's, he's been in contact with me, making trades and all the, all the key parts that he has to make. He had a bid for more, again, um, he has bid for more construction. It's going to really turn up. And he's been along with him, he's been operating for thirty-three years downtown and this is going to give them nice assistance to get in front of his building to where we want to reflect downtown. So it's a great move forward.
Any questions, discussions? Any counselors wishing to make a motion to approve the application?
Motion.
Motion and second. Was a second? Okay. Is there any further discuss, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Passes four zero. We are on to, thank you, Joe.
I'm done with that. I'll do that one.
I'm going.
We're on to discussion and proper follow-up, uh, the youth sports merger to city parks and rec. And I would assume, do we have Nick on board to also talk about this? Hi, Nick.
Hello. Uh, so just to bring this to your guys' attention, uh, back at the end of April, beginning of May, Lee and I met with, uh, president of youth sports, Dustin Noble, and then Sean Alafon, a board member, and they brought to us, uh, to the table to see if we were interested in taking over youth sports. Um, they have lost some board members. They've struggled to keep volunteers involved, uh, running leagues, things like that. And we're kind of at the point where we need to decide if this is something we are going to take on and expand our recreation department. Uh, this would take our recreation department, you know, a hundred, two hundred percent more, you know, of activities that we're adding than what we already have. You could see most communities around us, their rec department is, runs organizations like this. Uh, you have a few that are still, uh, organizations that are not tied to the city, um, like, uh, Tiffin, I believe, right now has their own, uh, baseball league and stuff like that. Uh, but you're starting to see more cities take over the recreation side of things. And right now, we kind of need to either meet with financial committee or about, is this something we can take on? With expenses, uh, staffing, um, concerns that I have. Uh, it's something that we just don't want to see die in, uh, the community for the kids to have these activities that, uh, that are available to them.
Okay, so, so I guess, Nick, I, I, I think maybe the, the first action, it's totally up to the council, but is to you, the look at the, the, uh, opportunity, I'm going to say, instead of the problem, uh, in how much it's going to cost the staff. Uh, I'm assuming there would still be volunteer coaches, but it would be more of all the behind the scenes type of staffing. So kind of bring us a plan, uh, of how much you believe it's going to take to staff this type of program, how much money it's going to cost the city and uh, so we have an understanding of the scope before we, we do anything else, but that's just.
I have, the youth sports has provided the kind of their fees and expenses, so we have that, those numbers. But you know, I know it's tough for them to, for their volunteer hours that they put in for the administration side of it, of collecting bills or fees. You know, at night when they get off with their nine-to-five job, uh, things like that. So, uh, that'll, that'll be kind of a tough number to put together. Cause we don't know the man hours that it's taken them completely, but we can get a rough guess, uh, on that. Uh, but they, uh, they basically, there's a wash. Let's just call it ten thousand in and ten thousand out, uh, for their yearly, uh, expenses and revenues. So, that's kind of where they've been at, uh, with paying. They don't pay coaches, but they pay officials, uh, they pay league fees for other towns that they go play in. They pay for rental fees for the schools, uh, they pay rental fees for us to use our fields. And then just officials and storage sheds for their equipment.
It's, it was our understanding that the equipment that they had, if the merger was something that we went forward with, the equipment would come to the city then, correct?
That is correct. Uh, that's something that will always have to be upgraded throughout the years. Uh, so your different years, you'd have, you know, football, uh, pads or helmets being replaced. I think that's what the youth sports foundation though, uh, but you got other equipment that we'd have to deal with, yes.
And Nick, can you, um, could you just, uh, give brief, so the park and rec board had met and discussed this as well. And, um, and their recommendation again was to.
That, uh, they, I mean, I guess their one concern was just making sure that it wasn't too much on my plates as I have taken on other duties, uh, within the city too. Uh, that was their main concern, but they also see it as something that this, the, the community needs and it needs to be available for the youth. Uh, so they, uh, they recommend that we still move forward, uh, with that.
Would you like Nick and I to work through those recommendations and, um, can we then contact the chair for the finance committee, um, to go through those pieces with or?
Yes, and, and you know, since we've already had, you know, started fiscal year, kind of also give us an idea, you know, I'm assuming if it's in and out, but there's going to be probably some other expenses because we have city, we're taking it out as a city entity, that there's going to be some other costs that we're not aware of. Excuse me, I apologize. But that, you know, can we absorb it, uh, in the budget year that we have not budgeted, uh, that, uh, entity or?
Yeah. And as, as well, probably keep our new city manager in on that. Uh, because again, he's experienced and he may have, he may have some knowledge of, you know, those type of organizations with the park. And when we get down, um, we actually have in my notes, we talked about a comprehensive plan. And this may be something, you know, from by state, by state with our cog, that they would want to take a look at as well. Uh, they may be able to have, um, the tools and the resources to put together the information a little bit better about, you know, the programs within that comprehensive plan. So, and, um,
Yeah.
And that would be another discussion that Nick and I had talked about, getting the finance committee together, um, to talk about the comprehensive planning with the by state, um, as a part of our membership. Um, but again, that would be more discussion if the finance committee would want to see that go to, you know, proposal, if you want to do something on a larger scale. So there's more discussion to be had and maybe those two tie in together pretty well. Um, Nick, what was your time? Did you have a timeline that we needed to let youth sports know?
Uh, well, I'm kind of been told that, I mean, they will not be doing any activities from this point on. So it's basically if we take it on at some point in the next two months, um, would be right into fall sports, basically, starting. Uh, so that's tackle football, that's flag football, and that is volleyball. That is all started there and T-ball. Uh, so that's a lot to take on, uh, right away too. So I guess the sooner, uh, you know, the best option, but I also understand there's a process. I lost, yeah.
A little bit extra percent of to get it to us.
I, I still couldn't hear you there.
Okay. Okay. We'll go ahead and, uh, council, is that what we want to do consensus to get something to us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Got that, Lee?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the discussion about the sidewalk program extension, uh, in our packet. Uh, this year's quadrant was the business district, uh, because of the COVID and some of the lost business and that. Uh, uh, looks like staff is recommending that we give an extension for that quarter.
That's correct, Mr. M. Again, given COVID, um, that certainly did, um, place our, our business district. Um, you know, a little bit into a situation where, you know, they're just now starting to, some of them are getting back on their feet, some are still working at, you know, getting back on their feet and then adding, um, the sidewalks into, you know, right away now that, you know, and again, I think it, it would be my recommendation that we allow them additional time. The other thing we're finding is that contractors, and so it's not just with the, it's just not with the downtown district, but we do have some residential areas. And the contracting, the materials, um, it is being difficult for folks and some of the individuals that have already followed up with us, um, their contractors are saying they're, they can't even get to them until the fall. So it, it would be my recommendation that, you know, we would consider doing an extension. Um, and then Joe and I, with Willie, we discussed, um, we have the emergency funds, um, at some point in time coming from the, uh, federal government. And, um, there was some discussion there that possibly, you know, there could be some additional funding, uh, that those downtown businesses could apply to, um, you know, to, on top of our TIF, but this could be additional funding to help assist.
Yeah, it's the, we discussed it to be basically a separate program that, that Willie could help administer, uh, for the down, especially for the, the areas in the, in the downtown, but it's, you know, anywhere that relates to it, but, uh, taking some of the money from the CARES Act funding. Five hundred twenty, we're going to get, putting it into a separate fund and having, um, not to put burden on the city's aspect of allowing economic development to help disperse those funds in a manner that would obviously have an application process to make sure that they, uh, follow it appropriately, but to help offset some of those costs with COVID. It's, it's taken its toll, obviously, on everyone, uh, but particularly small communities in those downtown areas have been. We're, we're in a fortunate place that we haven't lost anybody yet, but it's putting it under an unnecessary burden. That has to be done eventually, necessarily, but right now it's unnecessary to push forward with right now. It's why I, I mean, I'm supporting the, the decision to kind of ask for that extension. We give them a little bit more time to recover, recoup, and then if you have that additional CARES Act funding, it's, it's just a great use to, to continue what we want to see in the, in the business areas downtown as well as putting, not putting an undue burden on those individuals.
What's, what, uh, what's your recommendation on extension? Like, are you extending it for six months, a year? But so my recommendation was till September twenty twenty-two. Uh, that would allow us time, and again, that just allows time for us to have more discussion about what other opportunities that are there. Uh, because again, remember that in the downtown area, the city has, um, you know, part of that as well. And the other thing was looking at our capital improvement plan for that Calhoun section. And, you know, again, that would be a session I'd like to have with the new city managers. And maybe it's better to tie in if we're going to be resurfacing the street. You know, typically you would tie in those projects together. So, um, but my recommendation right now is an extension until I just came out to September twenty to go to.
It gives them a full year to recoup, um, and then allows time to plan, set up and, and figure out which way we want to go. If that's the route we decided to go, um, allows us to help implement that. allows us to help implement that, design it, make sure that all of our eyes are dotted, our teeth are crossed, and we're in progress, we're being compliant as well as making sure that people have time to build the funds up, cause again, if they need twenty thousand per sidewalk, I mean, it gives them that time, allows them a whole level limit we wanna set for that grant disbursement.
We need to do something.
I've got something in my.
I went, I went, I went, I moved on extension.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I moved to put it for a year now, or a year for that.
Residents, two, residents, it's credible also, it would be for residents also, it would be for not just the downtown, we're talking about the, the whole city.
It would be for the, it would be for the entire quadrant, yes. We're, we're talking about the entire quadrant that we're currently, um, and primarily most of them are in the downtown district, and then I think we have, um, I have a list here, I mean, about a dozen residential, but we're saying, um, so the motion would be, and, and I apologize, I didn't, um, if I had it would be but the current quadrant that we have at this time, um, to extend it to, um, the September twenty-two. So that's what you want me to make in the other motion?
Yes, yes.
So it'd be residents.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second? And is there any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'm in.
Anybody opposed? Passes four zero. We are on to the event permit, this is, uh, the Rotary, is it the Rotary, I believe, yep, for human traffic awareness event, July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, rendezvous park. They know, they're not asking for a street closure, just, uh, three or four parking spots in front. Motion?
No, no, no. Last year they had the same event, the same park. They probably have one people attended the event. I wonder whether or not this event has any precedence for the city.
Oh.
It's all now, the, you know, the good intentions of, by any means.
I think they had, they had a small gathering.
Of Rotary members, that's what they have.
They were coming and going, they didn't linger, I guess, and, and they had COVID, so.
Yeah.
That kind of minimized. It looks like they need electrics, so the boxes would need, it's.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Passes four zero, we're, uh, on to setting a work session date for the next council meeting on July twentieth at six-thirty, and this is to review the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, or twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit report with Taylor Johnson of Bowman and Miller PC. Are there motion?
I'll make a motion.
There's a second, motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Six-thirty gonna be enough time?
So, um, Mr. Johnson said he would just primarily be going through, uh, the comments with, that they have on the audit and discuss that information only, um, he has sent me the draft, and I will make sure I provide that to council prior to the work session, so if you happen to have any questions for the draft, um, you can present that to him for the work session, or prior to.
What's today this week?
Uh, July twentieth. I'm looking forward to hearing from our new auditors, since, uh, I've been very frustrated the last several years with the state auditors. So hopefully we can get all this done in a timely manner and get those, I am taking care of. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I am.
Anybody opposed? Passes four zero, we're on to reports, uh, Leo is not here tonight, so we'll cross that out.
He did give me, um, I, he did give me a little bit, um, he just, Leo had just, uh, reached out and said that he had been in discussions with Westbury Foods. Oh, Westbury Foods is, um, is looking to go back to, uh, processing beef, um, and.
And we let, uh.
So, yeah, so again, tho- those, these are just discussions right now.
Okay.
So nothing further, um, he has talked to, um, our supervisor, Greg Jergens, and, um, and he's been a part, um, we had a meeting about a year ago with regards to, um, you know, the bio solids and, and changes of that, and, um, so with that said, there's gonna be some ongoing discussion in regards to that before, um, that processing kicks in, and, you know, like I said, we've been having a really good, uh, open communications with Westbury Foods in the city, and I look for that to continue, and we'll make sure that that continues.
Yeah, that, that processing has kind of a give and take with it, it has much our, you know, capabilities, but it also is, uh, more profitable for the city.
I thought they were already processing, they were already processing some beef. Are they talking about increasing? No, they're, cause I thought they had a certain degree, they were, they weren't slaughtering, but they were hauling it in.
When they were doing roast beef, that sends a lot more.
I know, but I thought currently they were already doing some.
No, because they're not making any roast beef, cause, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, there's an issue, I don't, and I don't wanna
Yeah.
explain what the issue is, cause I'm not quite sure, and I'm not gonna talk for Westbury Foods, but yeah, they're not doing beef, like, at least from my knowledge.
Yeah, it was my understanding they're currently not, but they're wanting to move to processing beef, and, um, again, Leo had said that the timing, you know, is, you know, again, keeping that open-minded communication, Leo had stated that, you know, we can handle a certain amount of beef, but depending on what the process is going to eventually move to, the timing is good with that capital improvement plan at the waste water treatment to upgrade, so, um, and he just wanted to make sure that we communicated that he's been in discussions, and there'll be more to be had here in the future, so. And, yeah, that was.
Okay, sounds good, anything else from you?
And then City Hall is still on, uh, track, and they will have, July thirteenth, there'll be another onsite visit, so with council members, um, I can send them updates with that timing, um, when they're gonna do a walkthrough at City Hall.
Good, thank you. How about your city clerk reporting, any highlights from the enclosed report?
No, I just, um, the only thing I had, um, I had a really, uh, I, I was invited by the Westbury Rotarians to come and speak about, um, the city and what our success has been over the last year, and, uh, what we've been doing, and, um, as I told, uh, Councilmember McFerrin, I said, I found it, they want me to talk for fifty minutes, what could I say for fifty minutes, and then I found that they were trying to push me out the door because there was a lot of good things, a lot of things, we've been very busy, so, um, and I thank, uh, Councilmember Zacharias for attending, and then, um, Library Director Ally Pressman, she attended as well, um, and, uh, they've invited her back, um, to present on behalf of the library, so it's good.
I have to say that it was one of the best presentations you ever could have, obviously.
Thank you. It was fun, good crowd.
Okay, thank you. Uh, street supervisor report, that would be Adam, right, who is Adam?
Adam doesn't, uh, look like Adam was available to attend.
Okay, that was just fine, his report is enclosed in our, uh, council package.
It was down there on the one corner, that ain't working.
We need to talk to, yeah, talk to the police department, I have a note to follow up.
They pick up sticking, they're off to the corner, I mean, they're not paying attention to that whatsoever.
Okay, so, uh, the police report and electrical supervisor reports are also enclosed into our council packets. Neither of those individuals are available tonight, so we will go, go ahead and bypass that. Councilmembers, are there any committees, uh, city boards or anything that you guys have attended or wanna report on? Okay, so we're on to moving to closed session. And then, uh, just so everyone knows, that's on Zoom, uh, after the closed session, we will be adjourning. The closed session is, uh, asking the counselors to go into desire to hold, uh, this closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five point one subsection J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only when premature disp- uh, disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price, the government, you know, body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price, the governmental body would receive for that property, the minutes and the audio, audio recording of the session closed underneath this paragraph should be available for public, uh, examination when the transaction, uh, discussed is completed. Is there a motion to go in, uh, closed session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Zacharys? Okay, we are in closed session. We are out of the closed session. Are we on now?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on, there is no action to be had tonight, uh, from the closed session, so I will move, uh, for a council member to make a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
There's motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Right.
Anybody opposed? We're adjourned.